Good afternoon, everybody. It is 6:02. This is the meeting of the planning and zoning commission. Today is April the 21st of 2022. The item we have is a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Erasmo Villarreal.
Present.
Jorge Dominguez.
Present.
Mike Maron.
Here.
Abraham Lugo.
Here.
Johnny Narvai.
Present.
Yu Xian Huang.
Here.
Larry Dovalina. Daniela Salapas.
Here.
Ana G. Villarreal. For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have court.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to excuse Mr. Dovalina and Ana Villarreal.
Motion.
Second. And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Thank you. The next item that we have is, can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Give you guys a couple of minutes to look over the minutes of the last meeting.
American motion to approve the minutes for last meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those against, motion carries. Thank you. Citizens' comments, do we hear anybody signed up for citizens' comments right now?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings. First public hearing is amended the zoning ordinance map of the city of Ojeda by rezoning approximately 147.94 acres, situated in Portion 26, Agustín Sanchez, original grantee, abstract 282, and survey 1550 of the GOK Hall, original grantee, abstract 486, Webb County, Texas, said 147.94 acres being called out of 43,878.58 acre tract conveyed to the Kilam Ranch properties. This particular property is located west of Babolak Loop and south of University Boulevard from A.G. to B4.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Kilam Ranch property owner, active Kilam applicant, and we have Rolando Ortiz representative. Property location, approximately 147.94 acres, located west of Babolak Loop and south of University Boulevard. The zone change request is from A.G. to B4. Proposed use is commercial. Letter sent, 51. We have one for and none for against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. We have the zoning map. We have the future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change?
City of the Commission, Vince Martinez with Kilam Ranch Properties, and we are for the zone change.
All right. Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Martinez from the commission? Thank you for your comments. It's a public hearing, anybody else who wishes to speak? I'm sorry?
I'll wait for after the public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. Do we have a motion? Make a motion to approve? You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Maron?
Yeah, just wondering what, if they had any ideas yet with what was going to be done
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Uwosek Casagin Engineering, representing also Kilam Development. And no, anything that's allowed at B4, we're gonna contemplate building here. It's a big tract, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot of possibilities.
Just really, really, it's just the transition into the neighborhood on Casa Verde, as far as I know, it runs from, I understand all the, the frontage off the loop, and maybe even university, but it's that pocket there next to the neighborhood that maybe there's be parking in the street, as far as whatever uses would be there for those neighbors. But, just wondered, that's why I was wondering.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sek. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is amended the zoning map of the city of Ojeda by authorizing divisions of special use permit for restaurants serving alcohol in approximately 3.54 acres. This is situated in Portion 25 of Juan Garcia, original grantee, abstract 50, city of Ojeda, Webb County, Texas, being out of that certain 1,450 acre land conveyed to the Fina Benavides Alexander and José Finaletzner González. This particular property is conveyed to Emma Commercial Investments Limited Liability Company. This particular property is located south of Delmar Boulevard and west of John V. Alexander Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, we have Emma Commercial Inc., LLC owner. We have Othelia's Restaurant, LLC applicant, and we have Daniel De Hidina's representative. Property location, 3.54 acres, located south of Delmar Boulevard and west of John V. Alexander Parkway. Suite 1, and the square footage is 8,383 feet. We have the zone change request, which is a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. Proposed use is for a restaurant serving alcohol. Letter sent, we have 22. And inside the 200 feet, we have none for and none against. Outside the 200 feet radius, we have four against, meaning four for the, for the zone change, and none against. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. We have the zoning map. We have the future land use map. And Mr. Navarro?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You know, we, at first, when this, the applicant came forward with this item, there was very little information that was supplied to us. There, we just really didn't have any information. Yesterday morning, the owner came in with his representative to explain the project, to show us what they were gonna do. We went over the comments for the SUP, and because now I have some more information, I'm more comfortable with the understanding of what they're gonna do there. My decision was to, to support this, this project. So, there has been a change. I've asked the applicant's representative to, to present the, the information so that you have more information to look at than, than what was presented the first time, because I don't think it really gives you enough information to make a decision, as it did me. But I'll leave that up to you during the, the open hearing. And I believe Mr. De Hidina is sitting here, he, he represents the, the landowner.
All right. Let me go ahead and call for anybody who wants to speak in favor of the special use
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Danny De Hidina for the record.
Oh, thank you. And I'm here to speak in favor of this SUP request. Is it okay? Can I give you guys a short?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. Presentation. A quick overview on Imami Plaza. The project developer is Ramin Imami. He has built hundreds of custom homes in Alexander Estates. He has secured a really, really good reputation as a quality builder. Obviously, he's very, very invested in Alexander, 'cause he has a contract with Alexander to build homes there, and as everybody knows, it's pretty difficult to get lots right now, right? So, obviously, he would never develop anything that would hurt Alexander. He is now delving into full-scale commercial real estate development, sorry. So, the vision for the site is really an upscale neighborhood retail center, 34,000 square feet. The proposed occupants are traditional, traditional neighborhood businesses and services, right? So, hair salon, financial services, boutiques, and if approved, this one restaurant serving alcohol. Now, we will not have any more restaurants at this site. Now, the one unique aspect of the site is that it has access to multimodal transportation, right? So, you can get there by foot, there's a bus stop right across the street, and it also connects to the Upper Sacatay Bike Trail to the west, right? So, as I was going through the comprehensive plan, a lot of the goals and policies that are set forth on the Viva Laredo Plan are in line with this project.
Okay?
Here's the actual site, right? So, the yellow arrow is the actual property. You can see the bus stop across the street, and you can see the hike and bike trail to the west. So, it has a direct connection to the bike trail. Now, that bike trail is not very used right now. Luckily, we have secured a bike shop as a tenant, so we anticipate that this project is obviously gonna lead to more people riding bikes, right? Which is one of the major goals of the comprehensive plan. I'm gonna present you all with a short video, just so you can see. Now, he, he's, Mr. Imami is huge on design. He's very, very careful. He's assembled a very, very quality team of engineers, architects, designers. So, he's been very, very careful on the quality of the product that he puts on the Okay, so, very quick overview on the SUP. The proposed operator is Mr. Ricardo Quisi. He is the owner of three tacos quisi locations. He has built a great reputation as an experienced and successful restaurant owner and operator. Now, he is in the restaurant business, and that is his intent. His intent is to build a restaurant that is complemented with alcohol. This is not gonna be a bar. The vision is upscale restaurants serving steaks, seafood sushi, Mexican food, as well as adult beverages. The total interior square footage is 5,000 square feet. Of that, 2,000 is kitchen and prep, so it's really, 3,000 is only dining area with a very nice outdoor covered patio of about 3,300 square feet. What happened? So, it will not have live music. It will never have live music, and that has been confirmed by Mr. Quisi, and that has been confirmed by the owner of the entire retail center. It's not a bar, it's not a cantina, it's not a nightclub. This is a restaurant serving alcohol, similar to Border Foundry, Republica across the street, Chili's, Danny's Restaurant. There are the proposed hours of operation, and just for visual purposes, here's a site plan. And so, basically, the proposed location of the, if approved, will be that segment right there with a wraparound outdoor patio, which is all this area right here. Mr. Quisi is here to answer any questions, and when he's done, if you all have any questions, I'm open.
All right. We do have Commissioner Narvai's. What's up?
Okay. I have two questions. It does say no live music. Will there be speaker audio music in the patio area? And the second question also is, I'm done this Friday through Saturday, it's open till 2:00 a.m. So, my question is, why so late if it's just a restaurant?
Okay, puedo hablar en español?
Sí, claro.
Okay, la pregunta primera.
Su nombre fue archivo, por favor.
Mande.
Su nombre.
Ricardo Quisi.
Gracias.
La primera pregunta es, dice que no va a tener músico en vivo, pero van a tener pordina en el patio.
No lo teníamos contemplado. Este, si ustedes me dicen que no puedo hacerlo, no lo pongo. Este, sé perfectamente creo que, no sé qué tan cerca van a estar los vecinos, pero mi, la intención mía es no molestar a nadie, realmente vender comida.
Y la segunda pregunta es, en viernes y sábados van a estar viestos a las 12 en la noche, pero es razón, tan noche.
Que el señor Imami, este, recomendó poner una hora así. Honestamente, no sabemos si va a haber movimiento de esa hora. Este, no es el plan de hacer un bar. No sabemos si se va a vender comida o no. Lo más probable, para ser honesto, es de que si no hay ventas de comida de 12 a 2, se va a cerrar a las 12. Pero yo, incluso yo iba a ponerle a las 12, pero me recomendaron de una vez que pusiera hasta las 2, por no saber qué va a pasar, si la, la clientela va a desear a consumir productos a esa hora. Es la razón que nos fuimos de una vez, para después no molestarles a ustedes.
Mr. Chair, line item number nine of the SUP prohibits outdoor music and speakers, so that answers the question. Okay.
Yo ya firmé yo el contrato que dice todo eso.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
There's a 25-foot rear setback on this particular building, right?
Yes, sir.
Where or how do you plan to control your waste? Is it through bins? Is it through the city of Ojeda? And if you are, where are you planning to put these?
So, we have, it's a really good question, Commissioner. The trash receptacle is right about there. That is what we're looking at.
Grease?
The grease trap, we have access to only one grease trap, and it's proposed to connect right through here to a sewer line coming down this way.
No, but you're just, are you talking about disposing of the cooking oil and stuff like that, or what?
Yes. One of the biggest problems, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and also to Mr. Quisi. Do you understand inglés? Show you one minute.
Yeah, I understand.
En inglés está mejor, en español está mejor.
Está mejor en español, pero.
Okay. Una de las razones, Mr. Chairman, que teníamos, uno de los problemas más grandes que teníamos en el área donde tenemos un restaurante, es el discurso de la, de la trampa. No solo la capacidad de la trampa ha sido un problema muy grande, sino que a la hora de, de deshacerse del contenido crea dolores y crea problemas. El área que tenemos ahí, inmediatamente 25 pies separados de donde supuestamente va a estar el edificio, o sea, tenemos zona residencial. Hasta este momento, y voy a, voy a atraer esto ahorita, Mr. Quisi, porque esto es muy importante. Hay tres cosas que yo veo, Danny, tres cosas que yo veo. Una de ellas es que estamos asumiendo que ese edificio se va a construir. La segunda es que estamos dando, o pretendemos aprobar o negar, un permiso sobre algo que no existe. Y tercero, no hemos tenido ninguna oportunidad de que los, los residentes del área que está cercana a ese edificio vengan y pongan sus comentarios, Mr. Chairman, antes de que hagamos cualquier cosa que pueda afectar los que han vivido ahí, porque esta sección es la primera sección de Alexander, que han vivido ahí 30 años. Entonces, yo personalmente pienso que ahorita no es el momento adecuado de pedir este permiso, porque no existe el edificio. No existe ninguna manera de aceptar nosotros si hay algún compliance, no solo con el estado, sino con la ciudad, porque no tenemos ninguna, o sea, eso es lo que se, se asume, que se va a construir. También podemos asumir que no se va a construir, o que el edificio va a ser no de cinco, sino de siete, o que va a ser de cuatro. Entonces, yo personalmente, Mr. Chairman, yo no tengo problema que tenga un special use permit cuando haya un contrato, un permiso para construir que ha sido aprobado por la ciudad. Let me finish, don't get, don't get ahead. De la ciudad, y que veamos que eventualmente ya se está edificando, y que las, los, the size that they're bringing before us, that is gonna be built, is something that is realistic. Right now, we don't have a realistic building there. You only have an assumption.
They have a site plan.
Well, you know, the, the special use permit is very clear, Mr. Chairman. It says, the special use permit is used for those types of uses that warrant individual attention on a case-by-case basis, and should not be categorized, categorized in a zoning district. A special use permit is basically an overlay on top of existing zoning designation, can be limited in many respects, such as time fencing, setback, landscaping. A special use permit is required for those restaurants located, you see? So, we, actually, we need to have a restaurant located in an R.O., B1, or B3. Right now, we don't have anything there. We only have undeveloped land. So, if we were to, to even assume that that's gonna be built, and if we move to approve or even deny it, see, we're assuming that we're making a, a motion or a decision on something that is non-existent, because the permit is very clear. I mean, the description of the special use permit, very, very clear. A special use permit is permitted for those restaurants. We don't have a restaurant there, Danny. For those restaurants located on R.O., B1, or B3. So, that being said, I would not have a problem to give a special use permit once the restaurant is there, or at least we can physically see what's going on.
Or the, or the building permit's been issued for that.
That is correct, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you look at.
Let me finish real quick. Let me finish real quick. I would say that if you, if you bring something more than, than, than a video, see, once we have facts, that we can even prepare, protect ourselves. Let me tell you, and I'll be, I'll be brief, that we can protect this board against making a decision against the ordinance, because if we approve it or we deny it, we'll be going against the ordinance, because the ordinance is very clear. It talks about a restaurant that already exists.
Yeah.
So, that's the way I see it, that's the way I read it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Based on the ordinance, the way it's written, if my understanding is correct, like Mr. Dominguez is and anybody else is, the ordinance says that you gotta have a building and a restaurant on site to be able to give a special use permit to sell alcohol. We don't have that facility in place right now. The concept is great, don't get us wrong. Everything is beautiful. I think it's the mechanics that we're in right now that's a problem, because a special use permit has to be issued to a restaurant that's in existence. We don't have one in existence.
So, what, what you have here is that item number two of the special use permit reads, the special use permit is restricted to the site plan, which is made part hereof for all purposes.
I understand what you're saying, but what the ordinance says is contrary.
So, what?
The ordinance read, and, and he'd read that you must have a restaurant to be able to issue a special use permit. And this is where it's, you know, it's an issue. I would, I'm sorry.
We don't have a building plan.
If I, if I may.
Yes.
If I may. If I may, I mean, I'm, I am in favor of this special use permit, because there are many times, and of course, you've seen it more than I have here on the commission, that somebody comes to apply for a special use permit, and once it's given, then they're able to pursue opening the restaurant. There are many times that we have shell, uh, commercial buildings that says, okay, if you can get that special use permit, we will continue with our lease. We have, we have an intended lease, and it's contingent on, I'm not gonna charge you rent unless you can get that permit to apply for the TIBC license, so that we can continue. So, I, we have to look at it in that plan also.
Two ways. He did say that. Usted, o Mr. Quisi, ya dijo que usted tenía el contrato para el restaurante.
Ya firmé el contrato y todo eso.
So, ya está firmado. So, la cuestión now is.
Well, Danny, I have a question. So, the developer here, how many years do they have doing this? They've been?
Well, over 15 years.
15 years, and they've had numerous projects, and now they're, they've developed a reputation to now they're going to commercial development.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Quisi, you've been in the restaurant, usted ha tenido restaurantes por muchos años, right? So, esto no es el primer restaurante.
Es la primera vez que va a construir algo nuevo. En el caso mío, bueno, tengo una pregunta ahora. Este, en el caso mío, por ejemplo, vamos a suponer, yo voy a invertir mucho dinero en este restaurante, vamos a suponer que por equis razón, pues no se pudo hacer porque...
¿Cuántos años tiene en este negocio?
¿Dónde quedaría mi inversión, verdad?
¿Cuántos años tiene en este negocio?
18 años.
18 años. So, my takeaway to this is that it's not, you're not bringing nothing to the table, you're bringing plenty to the table. You're bringing these years of experience that you've been in the business. Usted tiene mucho tiempo que ha estado en este negocio, y I'm in favor of this because of the experience that you're bringing into this table.
I mean, it's a beautiful project, there's no question about that. Beautiful project. And so.
We're missing the point here. We're missing the point here, commissioners, we're missing the point. It's not about Mr. Quisi. I know Mr. Quisi, and, and, and I like the project. The point is that we're gonna make a motion against the ordinance. The restaurant is not built. It's not, there's no, nothing existing there.
May I, may I address?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead. Thank you. So, the property is already planted, the construction plans are already at the building department, and I expect to get building permit for the entire shell within a week. So, it's, everything's already pretty much been reviewed, we've submitted the revision, so the plans are in building already. So, that's what we're gonna build. That is what we're gonna build.
Mr. De Hidina, you're missing the point. We're not against giving the special use permit. I mean, he's gonna get it. He's gonna get it, because all the, the, the commercial buildings across the street, they all have them, but they're built already. It's not, I, don't think that we're not, I mean, I personally think that all you have to do is just wait, see? But you, Mr. Quisi, el permiso lo va a conseguir cuando tenga el edificio.
I don't mind waiting. Nomás tenía una pregunta, es la primera vez que, que alguien aplica para el, el special use permit, eh, sin tener el building?
Es la primera vez que yo lo veo, y nosotros tenemos aquí 10 años. Yo no he visto, al menos que alguien.
He's talked of de casos donde.
Al menos que alguien le lo traiga.
No ha tenido antes que se construya, pero.
Lo que pasa es que si antes vino esto enfrente de nosotros, o sea, yo personalmente creo que si lo aprobaron, estuvo equivocado, porque el orden es muy claro. Ahora, yo le puedo asegurar que si así como lo van a traer, se va a construir, usted no va a tener problema en que le den eso.
Más desesperado.
Entonces, usted vino ahorita y todos aprendimos.
Sí.
Mr. Chairman, ay. Entonces, yo pienso que no es el problema de que si se lo vamos a dar ahorita, o se lo vamos a, se lo vamos a dar. Lo que pasa es que la ordenanza es específica, y probablemente no se está entendiendo de la manera correcta, por eso la leí yo. Danny, there's not gonna be a problem.
Yo quiero decir nada más algo para entender.
I would suggest that you table the item, that you would table the item. Time uncertain, mister Chairman, and then he can come back and, uh, once the, the building at least is, uh, it's, uh, at a, at a first or second stage, and then we can approve. I mean, that's, that's a suggestion.
Let me, let me have Daniela.
Sí, el, yo lo que le quiero explicar a mister Quisie es, siento que lo que hemos visto es cuestión de tiempos, ¿verdad? Por lo general, como ahorita usted nos, nos dijo, yo es la primera vez que construyo algo nuevo. Yo, yo he ido a sus restaurantes y son edificios que ya estaban antes hechos, ¿no? Y usted nomás llegó y, y adquirió el, el, el edificio o lo rentó. En este caso que es algo nuevo, hay una ordenanza o una ley que pro- que protege, ¿verdad? Que todo vaya y fluya de la manera correcta, okay? Que eso es lo que dice mister Dominguez, ¿verdad? Y los, y lo segundo, y lo segundo es que obviamente queremos las, las inversiones, obviamente queremos que el aredo crezca, obviamente que queremos restaurantes y shops y demás, ¿verdad? Y entiendo el, el punto de mister Dominguez, que lo que, y lo que dice es que no podemos hacer algo en contra. Pero también sé que venimos saliendo de una pandemia, que, que todo mundo, que todo mundo ha tenido tiempos cortos, que todos los que han estado trabajando están trabajando de sus casas y a lo mejor a veces los tiempos, ¿verdad?, no son los correctos. Pero el plan, mister Dominguez, está ahí, o sea, estoy, todo está realizado. Y si él te estaría comentando, mister Tejerina está comentando que ya tienen un proceso, que ya tienen un, un, este, permiso, que ya lo van a tener en una semana, ¿por qué parar algo que, que, que puede esperar otras dos semanas? Y esas dos semanas es tiempo y dinero para ellos también. Es, es mi punto de vista nada más y eso es lo que yo quería comentar.
Mister Chairman.
Just a minute, just a minute. Let, let me, I have the commissioner.
I have a question for Steph. Wouldn't he need the S O P, the, uh, the S U P when he applies for the building permits?
For the building permits?
Yeah, no, he doesn't.
No, uh, that'll be for his, uh, liquor license.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir, no, I just think, um, you know, the interpretation of the law, you know, we have to take into consideration a lot of what, what's been talked about many a times. Investors in town spend a lot of money on land and if they can get a tenant, that's, that makes their project. And we see that in the warehouse industry, we see that in a lot of our shopping centers. And if we, we hold back on that, you're talking about somebody that's investing million, a million dollars or so, you know, and then might lose his tenant, might lose his anchor and, uh, because of an interpretation and, and I think that's, that is, that is something that we have to consider when you're considering this. I mean, in good faith, they have, uh, submitted their plans for the building, they have submitted the plans. Um, you can see they spent money on what the concept's gonna be. Um, this, this builder is building houses in Alexander Estates and the Alexander Investment Group chose them to sell this property to them because they see the work that they've been doing. So there's a history here, like you're saying, there's, there's a history here to this. And, you know, I would hate to see investors shy away. I think Delmar Boulevard is trending to be very nice with its shops and everything, and this is just a continuation of that.
You know, I, I think one of the things that, mister Dominguez has a point, but I think there's two things we need to look at here, one. Uh, Danny Tejerina mentioned that the plans have already been submitted to the building department. Plans should be approved within a week. What this commission does here has to go to city council, which is another two weeks away. So, it would stand to reason on common sense that whatever this commission wishes, it still needs to go to council, which then is gonna require two more readings, that's another month. Now, if for whatever reason this commission wishes to put another stipulation under that, by the time you get to council, you need to have your permit, it's still in the process. You're still having that, because the final say-so on this goes to the city council. All we're doing is making a recommendation to the city council on either yea or nay, you know? And then the council can either say we agree or disagree with the commission. But I think that in lieu of maybe delaying the process, because you're still a month to six weeks away from getting the final S U P. And if, basically everything you've told us that everything has been submitted and under review and ready to move forward, it would seem a logical thing that the process can move forward with a recommendation of yea or nay from this commission, final approval being at the city council level. All right, yes, sir.
I just wanna make a real quick comment, uh, mister Chairman, and, uh, I don't agree with the commissioners, I don't agree. And in Orlando, Navarro, sir, you're supposed to, to enforce the ordinance and right now you are not enforcing the ordinance. And, and I don't agree with that, it was only a comment, because I read it, came before us, already told them that we would give them the special use permit and if anything is approved, it's against the ordinance. And I, I don't, I completely disagree with mister Navarro in pushing something that is against the ordinance. And that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Mister Navarro. Yes, uh, I was wanting to see if anyone wanted to speak against this item.
I have not closed the public.
Okay, so, yeah, you get my comments after we've heard. Reserve my comments for that, right.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Um, and I just wanted to add that I completely understand commissioner Dominguez, um, concerns to protect the ordinance and I also believe we should protect the ordinance, but I think that this commission should also protect the spirit of the ordinance, which I think calls for the, the public to be protected, which I think we, we are ensuring that that happens by adding all of this, uh, regulation to the S U P. Uh, but I think like there's a lot more to lose if this doesn't move forward, because this is a great project that I think it's needed and will totally benefit everyone that lives around it. That, that's, that's what the comprehensive plan calls for. Properties that can, um, that can, uh, provide or in walk to services, walk to restaurants and I, I think, I think it's a per- perfect location for this kind of project. So I think like whether this gets approved in a week or two, I think the protections are already embedded within the, the S U P. That was my comment.
All right, let me continue with this public hearing, uh, do you guys have anything else to add? On, on approval, if not, I wanna thank you very much and I'm gonna continue with the, with the public hearing, all right? Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of this, in favor of this special use permit? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the special use permit, against? All right.
Yeah, uh, just the plan of, of the patio, that's like half of the design of the building is gonna be outside, is that what I was seeing, uh, Danny on the, uh, site plan? So, so we're gonna have, how many tables are gonna be able to be and how many people are gonna be outside if it's at, it's capacity?
So, um, the interior is right about, um, three thousand square feet of actual dining area. Um, as far as the tables, um, in the upper patio.
Tengo el plano ya. Y ahorita mi arquitecto puso en el área del patio, es un patio muy grande. Va a estar, es un patio pero va a estar más o menos cerrado, va a estar un poquito privado, elegante para ofrecer un buen servicio y tenemos.
La única preocupación que tengo sí es bastante gente afuera. Eh, eh, el ruido que van a hacer afuera para los vecinos es lo que pienso que es lo único del proyecto esto que, que pienso que va a estar difícil para los vecinos, ¿verdad? Eh, dependiendo en cuanta gente, pues mucha gente va para afuera para fumar o para, a veces muchas veces hay más gente afuera que adentro, ya después de las doce.
Aquí tengo, aquí mi arquitecto puso tres, seis, nueve, doce, quince mesas para cuatro personas. Este, comprendo su punto, este, pero claro, este, vamos a buscar la manera de no molestar a nadie, ya sea, mm, o sea, es, es como restaurante para comer tranquilo, sin ruido. Claro que si les pusiera música alta empiezan a gritar, etcétera, ¿verdad? Este, ah, se va a vender alcohol adentro, un pequeño baresito, un bar donde si alguien quiere a gritar o hablar un poquito más fuerte va a ser adentro. Afuera estamos concentrados en servir comida como, como más tranquilos, al aire libre, quien prefiera, ¿verdad? Esos son los planes.
Y, y te, tuviera una problema cambiándole el horario de lunes a viernes a las doce y los sábados y los domingos hasta las dos?
Yo no tuviera problema, no tuviera problema, este.
En esa recomendación.
Eh, porque en realidad no sabemos si va a haber negocio o no, estamos nada más, ah, suponiendo, eh, estamos extendiendo el horario para allá de ahí ajustarnos a lo necesario.
Y luego, aquí mencionan, mencionan algo de, mencionan algo del, uh, del parking, right, de la estacionamiento. O sea, we're, we're, it says here the, uh, commercial plaza requires two hundred and seventy-three spaces and the restaurant requires fifty, so there's a, is there like, we're short thirty spaces?
No, no, the restaurant, according to the plan is a hundred and one.
Right, but I'm taking total of the whole development.
I think that's what mister Navarro was saying, is that the information that we're reading here is, um, not, it was based on information, uh, lack of information he had. Um, so what he told us earlier is they reviewed everything and everything is up to par.
It meets, it meets the minimum spaces needed?
So what, what, uh, happened is, um, typically, you, you go by the business and the hours of the business, so, and so.
Right.
We went by the square footage of each location.
Right.
And did the maximum.
Right.
So they come up short forty, but I believe that because we hit the maximum, we're over. But, you know, we're, we're gonna have to, you know, adjust that, uh, accordingly as.
As other people fill in the other.
Comes in, yes, they have a bike shop that's coming in, things like that, then we can get a better understanding. So what we did was we maxed out on every, every, um, space there. So, uh, I believe we have plenty of parking space for this restaurant, yes.
Yeah, that, that, that was my concern, it was the, the parking and then how much of, of the space of the restaurant was gonna be outside and if he was okay with the hours going to midnight, like, uh, Monday through Thursday and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday till two.
Uh, we have, uh, the third comment says hours of operation shall be limited to from Monday to Thursday from eleven AM to twelve AM. Midnight and Friday and Saturday from eleven to two, so that's on the.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion, table the item, time uncertain, mister Chairman. So we could get more information from the, from the, uh, from the owner or developer and make a proper decision regarding this item.
We have a motion, do we have a second to that motion? Motion dies for lack of a second, all right? We have a motion, anybody else wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion across public hearing and, um, support the S U P.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? One against, motion carries, all right. The next item is amend the zoning ordinance to the city later by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for restaurants serving alcohol on lots one and two, block three, Calady Heights subdivision, unit three and lot three, block three, Calady Heights subdivision, unit two, located thirty-nine oh two, thirty-nine ten and thirty-nine twenty east Delmar Boulevard respectively, suites two oh five and two oh six, all right?
For the record, applicant is Calady Heights Plaza, um, uh, uh, see, owner, um, E N F Entertainment is the, uh, representative and the applicant, uh, Ernesto Trevino, property location is lots one and two, block three, Calady Heights subdivision, unit three, on lot three, block three. Sorry about that, Cal, uh, Calady Heights subdivision, unit two, located at three, uh, thirty-nine oh two, thirty-nine ten and thirty-nine twenty east Delmar Boulevard respectively, suites two oh five and two oh six only. The zone change request is a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. Proposed use is restaurants serving alcohol, uh, the restaurant's name is Santa Barra. Letter sent or forty-three, four or, there was none, uh, for and none against. Location view. Aerial map. Street view. Zoning overview. Feature land use map. Staff recommendations, staff supports the proposed zone change. Proposed motion.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the, uh, special use permit, in favor of the special use permit, yes, sir?
Good evening, uh, mister Chairman and members of the board. Oh, my name is Josiah Diaz, um, I'm the marketing, I'm serving as a marketing director for Santa Barra. I brought some.
Uh, facing up.
Yes, yes, sorry. Um, I brought some paper, uh, some marketing material just to present to the members what we're planning to do at the location and why we're requesting this special permit. We are going to be serving Mexican cuisine. Um, it's going to be Monterrey Guadalajara style of restaurant that has upscale, uh, service, upscale drinks and, and food menu with a unique dining experience to Laredo that will have a garden in the patio for brunch and, uh, of that sort. I don't know if you can see this picture here, but I'm trying to get a better one. Of like, the food and examples, but, there you go. Uh, the location is, is, uh, was currently and previously, well, was previously, uh, another restaurant, uh, that was that grill, that's where the location is actually at. So if you're familiar with that area, that's, that's the space that we're moving into. With a special permit, we'll be able to open up this restaurant and, uh, keep serving the community.
Okay, does anybody in the commission have any questions? Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the special use permit, in favor of the special use permit? Anybody who wishes to speak against the special use permit, against the special use permit? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, mister Chairman, subject to comments.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second from Daniela? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those against?
I abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries then, thank you. The next item, amend the zoning ordinance to the city later by amend the ordinance twenty, twenty oh six, dash zero, dash one twenty-nine, which authorize a special use permit for a mini storage on lot two, block two, uh, Monarch subdivision located at ninety-four sixteen McPherson Road in order to amend the site plan to reconfigure the storage units and parking.
Thank you, mister Chairman, here we have the Monaco self-storage, which are the owners. We have Holland Engineering, which is applicant and representative. We have the property location, lot two, block two, Monaco subdivision, located at ninety-four sixteen McPherson Road. Zone change request and amendment of a special use permit for mini storage. Um, proposed use is a mini storage, letter sent fourteen, none for, none against. Location view.
Oh, I did not do that, I was like, oh, I didn't do that. I swear.
Bummer, bummer.
There you go, I got it, I got it, okay. There you go.
Locate, um, area view. Lo, street view. We have the zoning map. The future land use map. And the recommendation is staff supports. And the proposed motion.
Alright.
So, Mr. Chairman, what you have here is that this, uh, storage facility. The proposed use on the backside was gonna be outdoor and they since wanna change it, now they wanna enclose it, make it air-conditioned. And, um, it, which I think would enhance that instead of having outdoor storage.
Oh, I agree, I agree. Uh, I have a question for you, is this in the floodplain?
This runs.
Right next to a creek, right?
Right next to the creek.
Yeah. So.
We, we can check it real quick.
So, well, they'd have to build just over the flood elevation, that's, that's all that is, okay. Alright, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Miguel Jimenez with Howland Engineering representing the developer. Um, I heard you had a question on the floodplain, as I remember the path, there's no, it's not on the flood, it's on the floodplain. Um, and yeah, like Mr. Navarro said, it's basically changing from outdoor to AC-conditioned units. And it's gonna look exactly like the building that's existing now, so, and we're, we're actually gonna add more landscape. We're gonna add more lasting, landscape to the existing and along Monaco for the new addition.
Any questions from the commissioners? The floodplain?
We can.
Check the map, real quick, and he gets a, he can check the map. Uh, thank you very much for your comments. Go ahead, Commissioner Loménez.
Yes, um, if, are we amend, are we increasing the area, Mr. Navarro? Or, or it's just we transforming the area?
Transforming it, it's the same, same amount as.
Actually, we don't, we don't need, uh, to address the special use permit because, uh, it's still stayed within the boundary, you know? The way I see it, uh. Whether we are, because it, it will only be a recommendation to amend it because it's already, it wouldn't, uh. There's no way, go ahead.
Yeah, um, excuse me, in the previous ordinance, the site plan, in, in fact, for all SUPs and CUPs, the site plan are attached.
Right, yes.
So he, they have to exactly match what was approved on the site plan. In the previous site plan, it showed three separate buildings. Now, the site plan, as you'll see, it's one large, uh, indoor building. So that's why they have to come back and get that changed.
Thank, that's, that was my question, Mr. Chairman, thank you, buddy.
No problem.
Alright, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against? Yeah, that's right, alright. But, before we ask for the motion, let me see what the answer is on the floodplain.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah. It's, it's not in the floodplain? That's it, we don't need anything else. That's it, that's it, alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion across public hearing and support the SGP.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second from Daniela? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Motion carries. Next item is amend the zoning ordinance of the city related by rezoning lot three, block one, DCA F Mines Road subdivision. Located at, uh, sixteen thousand one oh one, Farmcom Market fourteen seventy-two, from a B three to a B four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is Victor Espinoza, the owner and the applicant. Uh, property description, location is a lot three, block one, DCA F Mines Road subdivision. Located at sixteen one oh one FM fourteen seventy-two. Zone change request is a B three to a B four, the proposed use is an AC mechanic shop. Letter sent or twenty-two, four, zero, against, zero. Location. Aerial map. Street view. Zoning overview. Future land use map. Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion.
Alright, before I open the public hearing, uh, what is the rationale for not supporting the, the change? I mean, you are next to FM fourteen seventy-two.
It's next to FM fourteen seventy-two, there, in this specific spot, you have residential. It's one of the, the, the pockets of residential and across the street you have Green Subdivision. If you're familiar with this area, uh, Green Subdivision is directly across the street on the other side, it's trending residential. It does have a B three zone that could, could service the residents. Um, the, the applicant is requesting this for an air-conditioned facility for cars and tractor trucks. And so, uh, we'd rather keep the, the, the zone at an R three that could potentially service the residents of the area. I'm sorry, B three.
Wait, wait, I, I.
Pardon me?
You, I, I kinda lost your print. You would prefer to keep the B three to serve as the residence?
Just to get something.
Even though that you've got commercial traffic going up and down fourteen seventy-two? That doesn't make sense.
If you look up and down, you'll see that we have, uh, to the west, you have a junkyard with no parking. Uh, you'll see that there's other services out there that are using the right-of-way to park their vehicles. They, there's not enough space.
So what is that got to do with this particular property?
So we don't want.
Those things don't equate to this one.
Well, our recommendation is that we don't support it, I mean, it's, it's.
Your logic is, your logic is, it's not there on, on, on the wire, but that's irrelevant. Yes, sir, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Navarro.
Yes.
I'm always putting everybody in the next. That's okay, I think that's okay. What they're, Mr. Chairman, what, what they're bringing, it actually helps the community.
Yeah.
I mean, by, by denying them, we're discriminating. It's, it's just so hard, I mean, uh, I, I, I think that, uh, whenever you're ready to close the public, uh, hearing. I'm ready to move, move and, and provide the B four, I mean, tho, those people, they need to bring the business there and that's gonna be helping the community.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my comment.
Alright, let me go ahead and open the public.
Yes, sir.
Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor, a favor of la zona, cambiar zona. Okay, okay. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change?
Alright, there's that area, but you want further out.
So you can see the.
No, I'm saying, it further, go to the next business to the west. Right, there in zoom in? So if you zoom out again, you'll see there's a, you have a residential development behind this and then you can see across the street.
Yeah, well, you can see that there's, they can land there.
Claro.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Alright, that's it, alright. This is a public hearing, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the B four, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Motion carries, thank you. The next item, public hearing recommendation of an ordinance for a voluntary annexation and initial zoning of B four. On tract of land totaling three point two nine one zero. Uh, three point two nine one zero acres, more or less, as described, meets and bounds. Uh, and attached to exhibit A and known as annexation track one. The group, group? Gupa, gupa, track, gupa, track, located east of EG Ranch Road and north of State Highway three fifty-nine.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Anil Gupta.
Oh, excuse me, uh, for the record, Rafael Vidauri, who handles our annexations, will do, be doing the presentations on the annexation.
Of course. For the record, the applicant is Anil Gupta, the engineer of record is Duright Engineering. The proposed use is commercial and the proposed initial zoning for this development is B four, highway commercial district. Her location. Two hundred foot buffer. Aerial view. Zoning view. Future land use. Improvement or survey of the, of the tract. Staff recommendation, staff does not support the annexation nor does, staff does not support the initial zoning. And the proposed motion.
Let me ask a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm sorry, the, the proposed use, I believe, for this thing was gonna be, um. I think, I think when I saw the area, there was a, it's a salvage yard or something like that?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, so.
Is it surrounded, it's surrounded by salvage yards, it's property, isn't it?
It is surrounded by salvage yards, it is.
So, I'm trying to understand the logic here.
Okay, so why, so first of all, on, from the get-go, we did reach out to the county, the county does have as well a jo, uh, junkyard screening order.
Okay.
What we did find is that they do have some compliance issues with the county. So from the get-go, coming in, they already have some compliance issues with the city. So, it might be kind of advantageous to take care of those first, that's one thing. And then number two is on the initial zoning, which we couldn't quite understand, they did ask for a B four. But for the initial zoning, at least an M one or higher.
Yeah.
And if the use is a little more intensive, they would need a, a special use permit as well. So that's kind of where we were. But mostly, it's an issue of compliance, uh, they're not quite in compliance at this time.
Okay.
And you are correct, there are a lot of junkyards on.
Yeah, well, and, and that was, you know, when I saw the area, I said, well, wait, I mean, I need to find out. It's a compliance issue, is the particular individual who's applying for this annexation aware of these issues?
There are some issues, we did meet with the engineer, I think it was the day before yesterday, Ricardo Ramos, I don't see him in the audience, so.
Okay, so let me ask you this, the recommendation is denial, so if it's denial. It dies right here, is that correct? Or does it continue on, because normally there's three hearings after you get to the city council, right?
That is correct, there's still additional opportunities, or, uh, just, I could mention, we do have a little bit of buffer built in in our timeline.
Okay.
So if the commission would choose to table it today, we could bring it back time certain with the engineer here. And that would still comply with our timeline that we have built in it.
That's kind of where I wanted to.
Yeah, so we do have that built in.
On the council.
I think at this point, we do need, because of what you just mentioned, there's compliance issues. Uh, and I understand on the review process, obviously, that's a big red flag. I would recommend to the commission to table this item till their engineer and compliance issues can be resolved. If we do have some time to continue with this, either yea or nay. So, this is a public hearing, uh, presentation has been made, what are the wishes of the commission?
I, I motion to table.
Okay. We have a motion and a second by Ana Villarreal, speech. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Alright, item's tabled.
Time's certain, correct?
Yes.
Time's certain.
Chairman, just, just for information purposes, um, what we started to do is, we started calling the engineers who have items on the agenda. And we get to a confirmation if they're coming or not, we did have confirmation, Mr. Ramos was supposed to.
You know, a few years ago, I was enforcing the rule where the engineer was not present on their presentation, we're tabling the item.
That's why.
I slacked off a little bit on that, uh, because of COVID. You know, we got COVID involved and it became very difficult to do these Zoom meetings and all that kind of stuff, became real difficult. But, I will probably go back to the same rule.
And that's kind of the reason why we, we do this.
I mean, that's, it's very important for us, if the city staff engineers are here.
Yes.
That the engineer who's working on the project represent the applicant, it's very critical.
Yes.
So we'll probably be adhering to that rule from here on into the future, now that we're back in person. Alright, the next item is a public hearing recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation of the initial zoning of M one. Uh, the tract of land totaling eight acres, more or less, located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of Lampasos Loop.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, the applicant is Enrique Garza Cantú, USA DSM Incorporated. Uh, the engineer for this project was Blue Top, uh, the proposed use is light industrial. And the proposed initial zoning for this development is M one, light manufacturing. General location. Hundred foot buffer. Zoning map. Future land use. The survey, if you look at the lower left, it is the four tracks, which are part, platted tracks, part of the Pinto Valle industrial park. And staff supports the annexation as well as the initial zoning.
Alright, well, this is a public hearing, anybody wishes to speak for or against on this public hearing? For or against?
I believe we have the applicant.
Alright.
I'm one of the directors of the company and I'd love to speak for, for, for.
Okay, any questions for this individual? No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, anybody else who wishes to speak for or against, for or against his annexation? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion across public hearing and support staff, uh, recommendation for the annexation.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item is public hearing recommendation of an ordinance for volunteer annexation and initial zoning of B three. On a tract of land totaling five point zero three acres, more or less, uh, known as the annexation track four. And it is located east of Loop twenty and Bob Bullock Loop and north of East Delmar Boulevard.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Ramin Emami, Emma Commercial Investments LLC. The engineer of record is Premier Civil Engineering LLC. The proposed use is, uh, multifamily apartments. And the proposed initial zoning for his development is B three. General location. Hundred foot buffer. Aerial view. Zoning map. Future land use. A survey of the property, it's a tract up in the, uh, upper left. And staff recommendation, staff supports the annexation, staff support the proposed zoning. And the proposed motion.
Alright, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak for or against the annexation, for or against?
Well, I will be at his premier engineering, uh, we're in support of the item and we all have any questions?
Alright, anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Gutierrez? Yes, ma'am, Daniela.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Por, por donde se entraría? O sea, se entraría por Chur, Patriot Drive, or, or qué?
Tenía frente, tiene frente por la, Delmar.
Ah, por Delmar.
Es antes de llegar a, a Patriot Drive.
Ah, okay. Y es que no, no le entiendo como por dónde está Delmar. Es una escuela, o qué es lo que está.
It's a piece of property that connects to Delmar, so they're annexing the backside of the property.
Ah, ya, 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 okay. Ah, okay, entonces están haciendo nada más el men, para hacer un poquito más.
Sí.
Ah, okay, ya, perfecto.
Okay, alright.
Ya, 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 ya lo vi.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Anybody else who wishes to speak in for or against, for or against his annexation? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to support staff recommendation.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Motion carries. Next item is public hearing recommendation for an ordinance for a volunteer annexation. An initial zoning of B four, M one, and M two, on a tract of land totaling eight hundred and seventy-six point two five acres. It's described by meets and bounds, known as Annexation Track Five, located west of Interstate thirty-five and south of US Highway eighty-three, and I believe this, this was known as a twist ranch, if I'm mistaken, are they correct? I think I saw it somewhere.
This is the twist. Mr. Chairman, the applicant has asked to table this item, time certain.
Okay, motion to table the item. Second, motion, we have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you, next item is. Public hearing, recommendation of an ordinance for volunteer annexation and initial zoning of M one, on a tract of land totaling two hundred and eighty-eight point two-one-three-one acres, located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of Vidal Cantu Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is David Ruthinger of the Ruthinger Living Trust, the engineer of record is Gilpin Engineering Company, the proposed use is light industrial, and the proposed initial zoning for this development is M one. General location. Hundred foot buffer. Aerial view. This one is the future land use, pardon, uh, future land use, and a survey of the property. Staff's, uh, staff recommendations, the staff supports the annexation, staff supports the initial zoning, and the proposed motion.
All right. Public hearing, anybody wish to speak for or against, for or against?
Jed Gilpin, for the record, I can answer any questions that you might have on this application.
Anybody in the commission have any questions? No questions, Mr. Gilpin, I take it you're for. Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak for or against, for or against this annexation? All right, if not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff's recommendation for annexation.
All right, we have a motion, second. You have a second?
Yo.
I'm sorry, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item we have is a review and consideration of the following master plan review, and the, uh, the revision of the Pinnacle Industrial Center Master Plan, the intent is industrial, the purpose of the revision is to realign streets and increase the acreage of the master plan by adding unit thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, I believe you missed item six K.
I'm sorry, which one, K?
Six K, yes, that was the.
I'm sorry, you're right, you're absolutely correct, let me back up, public hearing, recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation of initial zoning of M one, on a tract of land totaling twenty-nine point six-six-five-three acres, more or less described by meets and bounds with attachment A, known as Annexation Track Seven, Gilpin Track, located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of Vidal Cantu Road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant and owner is Robert J. Gilpin, the engineer of record is Gilpin Engineering Company, the proposed use, light industrial, and the proposed initial zoning for this development is M one. General location. Hundred foot buffer. Aerial view, it's adjacent to the one, uh, previous item.
The previous item.
And this is, uh, zoning overview, future land use, the survey of the tract, and staff recommendation, staff supports both the proposed annexation and the proposed initial zoning.
I have a question for you, I know there's a study being conducted, um, on Riverbank, uh, extension all the way through this area, is that?
Yes, in fact, yesterday, there was an MPO meeting, and, um, they, they asked the MPO to pick it up a notch as far as getting the River Road study done.
Okay.
So, and we'll, actually, Mr. Gilpin's been, uh, very helpful, we're getting a lot of the landowners to participate in that study, so that we could really come together with an alignment for the River Road.
Very good, all right.
Again, Jed Gilpin, for the record, um, I've got a lot of time invested in the area, and including Riverbank Road, prior to even being, working in this immediate area, I was working on Riverbank Road probably fifteen or twenty years ago, I have a lot of interest in it, and I ended up buying a property out there, and, uh, I'm, I'm very interested in having Riverbank Road operate as a, for automobiles only, and so this is all aimed at that, and our, our, our group is developing in the area, we've developed in such a way on the industrial, is to not have to use, uh, Riverbank Road for truck traffic.
Truck traffic.
That's correct.
And, uh, the other property that we're buying from the Ruthinger prop, from the Ruthingers is also aimed at that same goal, so we will have, uh, I would roughly say, if you, if you look at where Riverbank Road could get to the Las Minerales, you probably, some, some of you may know where Las Minerales is.
Yeah.
It's out there on Mines Road, so from the connecting point on Las Minerales, back to, uh, uh, Aqueiro subdivision.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, we're, we're probably, I would say roughly about fifty percent of the, of the total length of it, and so, we're committed in this area to having that work, road work out that way, and we're understanding, uh, through the planning department, that our, some of our neighbors further towards Aqueiro, that has some pretty big stretches, are also committed, so I think that we're improving the chances of getting that done someday.
Perfect, thank you. All right, this is public hearing, anybody else wish to speak in favor or against, in favor or against? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, reviewing, uh, revision of the Pinnacle Industrial Center Master Plan, the intent is industrial, and this is to realign streets and increase the acreage of the master plan by adding unit thirteen.
Chairman, uh, for the record, applicant is FM fourteen seventy-two Investments, engineer is Gilpin Engineering Company, proposed use is industrial, and the zoning for this eighty, eighty lot development is AG M one, any portion is in zone, as it is currently outside the city limits, thank you. Location view. Aerial view. The proposed, the revision of the master plan. Comments from planning. Water and utilities, traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Again, Jed Gilpin, for the record, and this master plan encompasses the two items that we just discussed, so if you have any questions, I'd like to answer.
I have one question, Jed, there's a big old issue here on traffic on the Mines Road, and say that this is gonna be a minimal impact on the Mines Road, tell me how?
Well, our, our master plan has a total of seven connecting points out of our area to other roads, and I think we have, uh, four of them to Mines Road and three of them elsewhere, so that's a lot more connections than any industrial area has had to date, so, you know, we have, we have traffic impact analysis that we do as we go on, and every time we add something that would impact the area, we have to do those traffic impact analysis to satisfy, now, the city requires, that it used to just be text dot, and, uh, so we, we turn that into text dot, and once we get the concurrence from text dot, then the city goes ahead and moves forward with us.
Well, we have, we have two overpasses, um, if you, if you look at this picture, the top yellow?
Yeah.
That's gonna connect, connect to Las Tiendas Road, they're gonna reroute Las Tiendas and connect that with an overpass heading to thirty-five, and then, further south, the, the purple, I call it purple, uh, which is number five, that's gonna connect to the Achar Ruthinger Road.
Okay.
And exit out, so you'll have, anybody who's trying to get to thirty-five could use those two.
Those two for thirty-five, and the inner ones.
That's correct.
And I might add, in, in our case, you know, we've, we've pursued every opportunity to connect, to add importance, so you'd add more connections, but there's a limitation as to how many connections you can get with text dot, and it has to line up with a game, so we've done that.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gilpin from the commission? Thank you very much. All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll move to approve subject to the following comments.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, reviewing revision of the DNJ Alexander subdivision master plan, the intent is residential and commercial, the purpose of the revision is to reconfigure phases fifteen, sixteen, and then, uh, unit twenty-one, thirty-one, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, um, applicant is DNJ Alexander Management, engineer is Premier Engineering and Surveying, proposed use is residential and commercial, and the zoning for this one thousand five hundred and three lot development is R one, R two, B one, and B three. Location view. Aerial view. The revision to the master plan. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
Can you go back to the, uh, overview, the, uh, yeah, back, back, one more back. Okay. So, the one thousand acres are where?
It's. It's already there.
The whole thing.
It's.
So I would say, well, fifty percent are.
Maybe.
Ten is already built.
Yeah.
Or like eighty.
Fifty percent?
Yes.
Okay, okay, no, that's, that's fine, anybody else have any questions? No, all right, what are the wishes of the commission, do you have something to add, Eddie?
Well, Mr. Gutierrez, for the record, we're okay with the comments, uh, just a note on number two.
All right.
As far as the park, uh, review, we'll submit it for park review, we do have substantial park credits, because of the fact that my client donated the Hiking Bike Trail, so we'll, you know, we'll review, we'll let them review it again, but just, uh, I'd like to comment on that, but.
Okay, so noted, um, is there a picture of the old master plan and the new one, the way it's changed, but I'm asking staff, I'm sorry. Do you have a copy of the, because I'm looking, you said phase fifteen, right, we just kind of, this whole area here, but I'm looking on my map, I was just trying to see how the new residential is going, is it, that whole area is gonna be residential now, like?
No, 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 just a little, like, I think it's like.
Your little tweaks. Is that the area? Okay, all right.
It's a really small area change.
So that's not the whole.
No, it's just a little, all the side.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, thank you, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve subject to staff comments.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. Next item is reviewing, uh, revision to the San Isidro Northeast Master Plan, the intent is residential, commercial, and institutional, existing, the purpose of the revision is to reconfigure the.
Crepúsculo.
Commercial Plaza, is that it?
Crepúsculo.
Crepúsculo. Commercial Plaza into East Crepúsculo Plaid, multifamily.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is San Isidro Northeast, engineer is Lee Engineering, proposed use is residential, commercial, and institutional, the zoning for this two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight lot development is R one, R one A, R two, B one, B three, and B four. Location view. Aerial view. The revision of the master plan. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, uh, commissioners, my name is Ramiro Barra, I work for Lee Engineering, and we concur with the comments, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, we have, uh, one comment that, if, uh, you could get with utilities, uh, I know you're going from commercials to multifamily, item, on one area, okay, if you can get with utilities, I would like to just review that, the, the volumes for that.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem.
Where on this particular master plan is this changed, I, it's kind of small for you to see.
It's on the bottom, that piece, yes.
Okay. All right. So. Your access to this particular property is from, uh, coming off of, uh, what is that street, I can't even see the name.
This is Crepúsculo Drive.
It's Crepúsculo, the one that is ten off of.
All right, and that's gonna be your access point to this multifamily?
No, it would not be, my, the access for that property will be on Loop Twenty.
Off of Loop Twenty?
Yes, the reason that L-shaped, uh, figure is like that, uh, text that is buying that property, so they're kind of cutting us off from, uh, a, there is an agreement for them to give them, to give access to San Isidro through Loop Twenty.
Okay, all right, does anybody else have any questions? The engineer.
So, will, are we to assume that the, the taking that, that text lot's doing, well, I call it taking, is that gonna continue on the other side of that entrance, in those commercial lots that are there?
Uh, partially, yes, not completely, but it's gonna.
Because.
So we'll need to see.
I have, I have a question, it says there's a detention pond, did you see?
No, I can't even see this, that's too tiny.
All right, let me, you can see it better on the, on the packet, yeah, if you zoom in.
You can zoom in now.
I see it now, yeah.
What page is it on the packet?
For this subdivision, right.
So the entrance would be through here.
Here. You have to come in here, because this is the dedication right here, this property.
Item, uh, is for the master pen, the item for the actual pad will come up right now, so it has a zoom.
It's one of those.
All right, anybody else have any questions? Not, what are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those against? Motion carries. All right, next item is preliminary consideration of preliminary plats and preliminary replats, preliminary consideration of the plat of Lot One, Block Two, Alexander Commercial Subdivision, Phase Fifteen, the intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is DNJ Alexander Investment, engineer is Premier Engineering Surveying, proposed use is commercial, the zoning for this one lot development is B one and B three. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Water and utilities. And the proposed motion.
Okay. All right, yes, sir?
Well, Mr. Gutierrez, for the record, the engineer, uh, supported the item, and we agree with all the comments.
Eddie, how big is this tract?
It's, uh, one point five nine acres.
That's what I thought, because it's, my communication says a hundred and fifty-nine acres.
I wish it was. And I wish I owned it.
I looked at this and I said, it doesn't jive, either somebody, I missed a period or I can't see the period, is there a period there?
There's a period, but it's real close to the five, I could. There, there's a period, but it's real close to the five, so.
Oh, okay, good, good, that's a good answer from a planning director.
It's there, it's there.
All right, any questions for Mr. Gutierrez, committee buddy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion subject to staff, approve subject to staff comments. A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot Four, Block One, Rorito Area Subdivision, unit six into Lot Four A and Lot Four B, Block One, Rorito Area Subdivision, the intent is commercial.
Um, yes, applicant is.
C H Thai.
C H Thai, sorry, engineering is Beua Consulting, proposed use is commercial, the zoning for this two lot development is B four. Location view. Aerial view. Street view. The plat, and the replat. Comments from planning. Fire, water, and utilities. And the proposed motion.
Okay. All right, yes, sir.
Chairman, commissioners, staff, good evening, my name is Oscar Castillo, representing the, the client, the, the owner, and, just wanna, uh, we, I just wanted to clarify two, and request a variance, uh, this is an existing subdivision, this is, it, it already has, it's been developed, the owner has the area, you know, it is, it has, uh, offices, it has two buildings, so the, the reason of this replat is to divide each building in one lot, and, one of the.
No, no, I'm sorry.
So, uh. So, uh. Uh, number two, it says clarify primary access for the proposed Lot four B, since Crescent Loop is thirty-eight, which. It is a planted lot, so I don't know why it's thirty-eight, but, uh, uh. What, right now, the way I was proposing the replat is, I had a twenty-four. Interior access easement that was given a cross-access to both lots, to, to both streets. But since, uh, Crescent is, is only at thirty-eight feet. Now the main thing is, uh, for Lot four B. And if you, you could go to.
Yeah, let me, let me bring up a better.
This, this, you, you say ask like, the, 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 the platform. So I'm proposing a twenty-four. Is that perfect? So I'm proposing, uh, you can see the twenty-four, uh, access easement.
Mm-hmm.
And.
You can use the mouse.
We have this space and the, we have this space and the. And the pavement for, for what they're asking, so we could have this. So the way we would provide, uh, access to, to the Arena Road, to Lot four B, would be. We're gonna increase this one to fifty. And we can do that. And we actually, you know, the, the lot currently has thirty-one, with the exception. You know, on the entrance is twenty-four, but from there it opens to thirty-one and more. So, that was the, what I was gonna, we will conform with it and provide the fifty. For, uh, access easement, but also we would like to have the variance just for the entrance. The entrance is twenty-four.
Uh, let me see if I understood you correct, right, maybe I didn't. You're proposing, uh, what size easement on that road?
A fifty.
Five oh.
Five oh, yes. But, the, the problem here, we have a, you know, Lot four B has a perfect, uh. You know, access to, to Crescent. But it is, Crescent Loop is only thirty-eight, so per code, we could not connect. But really, right now there's a connection, there's nothing wrong, everything is working. So. For comply with the ordinance, what we're, uh, doing is.
Well, wait a minute, let me ask you, this is an internal circulation to get out to Arena Road. So why fifty? It's like a normal driveway coming out. From a. I mean, I, I don't see. I personally don't see the fifty. I mean.
To be honest, it's working, I mean, it, it, it's.
That's what I'm saying, you know, I mean, you, you have a driveway already that's working.
Yeah.
I don't see a need to increase it, I mean, this is internal circulation.
I agree.
That's all that is, that's, there's nothing else there that is a through street in the future or anything like that. It's a dead-end plat.
So the reason that, that he's doing this is Crescent is, is a private road, which is the side road. So he's just, that second lot in the back. Needs to connect to a city street. Which is, uh.
Well, it, it's.
Crescent.
To a fifty foot.
A fifty foot, yeah, the measurement. So that's the adjustment they're making, it's simply because, you know. Yes, he does have Crescent Road to work with, but that's a private road, so he's just doing it to meet the, the, the plat standards to, to do, that's, that's where he's going.
Crescent Loop is a private road, correct?
So he can have an extra.
Alright, I get it.
He's gonna have the exit.
I get it now.
When we looked at it, we found that it was thirty-eight.
Yeah. Okay.
Or some, some reason.
That's it, you gotta have circulation based on a minimum of fifty feet, alright, I got it.
And. And it complies even with the thirty-one, with the exception, you know, the entrance narrows to twenty-four, which is just a, just a connection to.
Existing.
So we're just asking for that variance.
You're asking for a variance of twenty-four feet at the curb cut.
Exactly.
Isn't exist, is there an existing curb cut there already?
Yeah.
That's what, yeah, it's already existing.
Everything is existing.
Well, let me ask you this, your ordinance says you're, you're required a fifty-foot right-of-way, is that what it says?
No, it says that you need to have at least fifty-foot right-o, or fifty-foot access easement, or right-of-way, or. And a thirty-one, a thirty, uh, pay, thirty-foot pavement.
Thirty, a thirty-one, thirty?
I think it's.
It's just thirty.
Thirty-one back-to-back.
Thirty-one back-to-back, yes. Well, it, 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 it just takes.
It, it's, for some reason, on, on the ordinance, in that particular section, for an access easement that says fifty with thirty. Easement, access easement, so you're correct, on the public street, it's, it's.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one back-to-back.
But for some reason or other, it does say thirty.
Maybe because of the prior rule.
Sounds like a mistake.
Just like the point.
Well, I guess the next question that I have on this is this.
Tech writer.
We need a street. Minimum thirty feet. The way the ordinance is written, it requires a fifty-foot right-of-way, cause I really don't see a need for a fifty-foot right-of-way if you just need a street. I mean, that's the way I see it, I mean, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna put sidewalks in this property? No. Are we gonna put utilities? No, you already have the, uh, access utility easement, so. I don't see the need for a fifty-foot right-of-way, I, I don't see it. I see the need for the thirty-foot. Minimum street to get you in and out. I would recommend that we just say thirty feet street, and that's the end of that.
Yeah.
I would just say it would be more of a. Hazard if you try to put a sidewalk on this thing within an existing.
This is already built out, so what we're talking about here is on paper.
So I would just say thirty foot, comply with the thirty-foot requirement for the street and forget the fifty foot. Cause you got twenty-four and just.
And, and it opens immediately.
And it, it'd be, it gives it a better.
It, it opens.
Better situation.
Thirty, and, and then it goes all the way to thirty.
Yeah, I would say, that would be, I mean, it's up. That would be something that I would consider definitely, to look thirty foot, street all the way through, instead of a fifty-foot right-of-way, just say thirty foot.
Yes.
Street.
Yeah, I would rather request a variance, yeah, just to, to have the.
Yeah, just to have that thirty foot, okay?
With the twenty-four.
Any questions from the commissioners? Alright.
One more clarification.
Yes, sir.
It says fire. This is, as, as we talk about, is, is an existing subdivision, it's been there for many years, and it says fire hydrant required. Uh, fire hydrant required every three hundred feet, is this just a standard comment, or?
No, it's not a standard comment, minimum means we're apart from it. Usually if you had to go over transverse or drive over three hundred feet in a commercial, we're asking for hydrants. But as you know, we recently adopted the twenty eighteen fire code, and to address this particular situation, we've changed our amendment to. Read on new private and new public streets. So in this instance, we can actually strike that comment, cause this is not a new street, it's an existing street, we don't want people tearing up streets that are already there, so in this instance. Uh, we can go ahead and strike that comment.
Okay, alright.
I think Mr. Chavez wanted to say something.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ramon Chavez, City Engineer. Um, I know we discussed this item, uh, originally when we met internally. Uh, but right now, when I was, uh, listening, uh, I heard about the access easement. There's a section in the ordinance that, that talks about the pavement, uh, section. So if, if there's something that's already developed, that, if you label it as an access easement, they may need to comply with the, uh. Dignness of the pavement and the base requirement, so that's something I just wanna make the commission aware. I'll have to look at that section of the.
Is there an ex?
Even if it says interior access easement?
Maybe, if, if it says interior access, that may be something we need to, to work with. But I just wanna bring that up.
Okay, well, right now, is it, i- is it paved concrete or what?
It's paved.
What is it, a four-inch or a six-inch concrete?
I would imagine, I don't know for sure, but at, at least, uh.
At least four. Probably more.
Usually, the requirement for an access easement is very minimal. I mean, it's, it's, it's even, so. I would think complies, but at the same time. This is an interior access easement, and I don't know if that makes a difference.
Well, it's not a through street, see, this is where I was coming from, it's not a through street, it's just a compliance issue. To, and so I would say, you know, it's already existing. And that's, we'll just grandfather it in for, because it is an existing pavement section. It may not comply with the, uh.
Right, there's a section in the ordinance that talks specifically about access easements.
Okay.
And needing to comply, uh, for them to meet the standard of a local street.
Right. But that is, if we're gonna build one, this is existing.
Right.
This is where it becomes.
We'll, we'll, we'll look at it and then we'll, we'll work with it.
Thing to me, it would work.
It would understand that there's a success danger.
It's an existing, and. They would just say, hey, it's already there, just make it a thirty footer and that's it.
It might even be concrete, if you look at it.
It is concrete.
It is concrete.
Concrete.
It is. So, por eso digo, I mean, it's, you know, okay, so then. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, so we're gonna strike the comment from fire, and, um.
Number two.
The other one is gonna be the thirty-eight foot wide, where is it? Which is the other one?
Comment number two.
Comment number two would go to a thirty-foot pavement, uh. What do we call it? We call it an access easement, or do we call it a?
Internal access easement.
Internal. To comply with.
Yeah.
Internal access easement, thirty foot wide with no fifty foot, just thirty foot wide, that's it.
And a twenty-four foot curb cut.
Twenty-four foot existing curb cut, and then it, and it, you know, expands to a thirty foot.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so that's, that's it. Alright? Okay, motion to that effect?
Yes.
We have a motion, do we have a second? And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. And one abstention. The next item is the preliminary consideration of the plot of San Isidro East. Crespo, Pusso? Crespuso?
Crepúsculo.
There you go, that's the one. The intent is a multi-family residential. Crepúsculo. It's Crepúsculo.
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 You're, you're saying it, you're saying it correctly. But in Spanish, it's the word in Spanish, it's the S and then the C. Separate. You don't say s, you say s. Grammatic thing.
Dictionary thing, it's a dictionary thing. Yes, sir. Who's gonna make this presentation?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is San Isidro northeast. Engineers Lay Engineering Company, proposed use is multi-family residential, the zoning for this one lot development is B three. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, water and utilities. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Alright, yes, sir?
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, my name is Ramiro Barra, I work for SLA Engineering, and, uh, we concur with the comments from staff.
Okay.
I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? No questions, thank you. What are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion to approve, to the, subject to the comments.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. The next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of Acevedo Ranch Plaid, the intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, applicant is Eliud, for the record, applicant is Eliud and Adria Acevedo family, engineers Lay Engineering Company. Proposed use is residential, and the zoning for this one lot development is B. R one. Location view. Area view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know if you're familiar with the history, I think you might be, Alta, Alta Mira, off of International Boulevard.
Very familiar with it, had a lot of problems there.
Lot, a lot of problems. The, the applicant, uh. Inhe- inherited, or excuse me, he bought this property and, I'm, I know he's not familiar with some of the nightmares out there.
Yeah.
Um, we're asking, uh, staff is asking that, uh, we consider a, a variance to the entrance at thirty feet. Uh, in order to make this work, because he's dealing with. Issues that happened in the early eighties.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, we thought this was a good candidate for a variance, but we want to bring that to your attention before they.
Yeah, cause that was gonna be one of my questions, I said, I mean, what's the access point coming, uh, where is it coming? Alta Mira is still a private street, so. You know, this becomes an issue, uh, and that's why I was, I can see a connection there to this property, I think that's a connection, or maybe a lot.
No, it's a lot.
What is it, that, what is your connection to the, to getting to this property now?
Uh, again, my name is Ramiro Barra, uh, we're for SLA Engineering, I'm representing my client, uh, Dr. Eliud Acevedo. And he bought this, this property is adjacent to, you know, property to the west, and there's an existing thirty-foot, uh, access easement at the moment. And that's where, that's how he can access his property.
He can access his property.
Uh, the neighbor to the west already, you know, has a very beautiful home, and he has a, you know, a fence, there's vegetation. And, you know, it's set right there on the thirty-foot, um, width, so. I know comment number two is asking for a fifty-foot wide, uh, access easement, but. Uh, the doctor spoke with the gentleman, his neighbor to the west, and he is not in agreement in, you know, giving a fifty-foot access easement. So. We, uh, for comment number two, uh. Dr. Acevedo is willing to do the, you know, the entrance up to his property. Uh, as per, as per city ordinance, um, you know, uh, or as, as much as it would allow him. That, that, uh, fence that you see there is no longer there, it's a very, you know, nice block, six-foot fence with stucco and, and, and everything, so. It's, it's not the way it's shown on that picture.
Yeah, can, enhance that, can you all? Put that picture back right there? Alright, can you zoom?
Yeah.
No, let me get it a little bit more.
So, so what we were, uh, suggesting was, uh, the thirty foot, but. Uh, as they go in towards the end of the property, create a cul-de-sac for fire, for, for a turnaround point, so they can get back out.
Well, it depends on how the property is situated, if they're not needed.
They, they have, they have plenty.
They can do a, a roof around the property, how, property's four acres, right?
Four acres, that's correct.
So I mean, it just depends on, on how the property's developed, you might be able to just do a ring road around it or whatever.
So if you see the, see the green square, that green square has access to Puig Street. The red square, like I said, if we brought in the road and they cul-de-sac right at the red, that would give that piece of property a way to get out. You understand what I'm saying?
Okay, now show me where you're proposing to bring in the road and the, and the, uh, on the, over there?
Yeah.
Point it out over there on the map?
You can, you can use the mouse, or.
Right now, there's, through here. There where the, the mouse is pointing, uh, there's an existing block fence through there, and that's how the doctor can get to his property. Uh, and just to further elaborate on this, uh, he's maintaining, as of now, that property as R one.
Mm-hmm.
He just wants to, you know, right now there's a, like a demolished home, he just wants to build down a home, he's not, uh. You know, he's not gonna generate a lot of traffic, it's just to access his, his property, that's what he wants to plant it. And. He, right now, is granting access to his neighbor on the east, which is this neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
Through there. Uh, but I wanted to also mention on that comment number two, if it was, uh, okay with, with the commission not to build that road all the way. I mean, he continued to grant them access, but if he can just, uh, build it up to his property.
Is it, is the?
It's only servicing him at the moment, and whenever, if, if his neighbor to the east wants to build it, then, you know, he's.
Is the property to the east vacant right now, or is there a house on there already?
No, there, there is a house there, and that person is the same owner that lit, that owns the property in green. So, you know, can, he, he can access.
He has access from another point.
Yes.
Okay.
But there are two different lots, uh, unplanted lots, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Um. I don't know, uh, planning director? What's your, what's your take on, on that?
So, so even though it's two square, uh, red square and a green square, it is the same owner. And he does have.
Oh, their access.
He has pavement right up to his property.
Yeah.
So he should be able to access his property through Puig.
To the red lot, to the one in red.
Eh, to the one in red, he could access the one in red, he can get in and out off of the asphalt that's there. So eh, we don't have a problem.
Okay. And then we're okay with eh, what his request is for only a thirty-foot wide paving section and no fifty foot.
That's correct, and then the rest you'll deal with.
No fifty foot. Okay, so it'll be thirty-foot easement and road.
Mm-hmm.
Up to the edge of the property is what you're asking, correct?
To the edge of our property.
The entrance to the property, right? Now, the question that comes up is what you mentioned, you mentioned the cul-de-sac?
So I'll leave it up to them to, to, to.
And Ruben is here, Ruben, eh, let me ask.
Well, I mean, we could look at it, I mean, it's kind of hard to start giving you the yes and the no's, but just looking at an aerial side.
Yeah, it's preliminary anyway.
Sit down with him and try to see.
Okay.
What's the easiest way to get access?
To get access.
They do want apparatus access.
Eh, and I agree.
You have your home on.
I mean, I agree, that's why it's, you guys can work it out as you go through the one-stop shop and figure out how that access can be granted to.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, all right. Any questions from any of the commission members?
Because he can't go in through the, through, through other parts, that's the only thing, that's the only road that can give an access.
The issue we're talking about is fire protection. Normally requires a cul-de-sac when you have a dead-end road, okay?
In this case, this is such a short.
But it's a short, that's why.
Area less than, I would say, a hundred fifty feet.
What's it, this a hundred feet or what is it?
A hundred fifty feet.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. I mean, you all can work that out in the one-stop shop, I, I mean, I think that can be worked out there. That way fire can, you can, like you said, look at the plan much better and much easier. Okay, anything else that, on the comment set? How, how do you, how, how do you have water and sewer currently?
Eh, there is.
Where's the line?
Eh, the doctor has a, a water meter, and when, when they were working on that road eh, the doctor told me that they also eh worked on a, on a sewer.
The water and sewer is going through that easement on Almeida?
I believe it's right eh, Alta.
It's Alta Mira, Alta Mira? Everything is at Alta Mira. Okay.
He has his water meter right, right on the right-of-way of Alta Mira.
Everything is put in Alta Mira.
And from there, he extended through the easement.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the, the service to provide water to his property.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
No.
All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve with eh amending um comment number two with a thirty-foot entrance variance. And eh paving up to the property line of the entrance of the property owner's home.
Subject to obviously the negotiations with fire, based on whether they need a cul-de-sac or turnaround or whatever.
Yes.
T hit or whatever they wanna call it.
Correct.
So, did you hear that?
I'm sorry, we're just trying to clarify that, we speak a little louder, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. So um, make a motion to approve sort of typical comments, amending planning comment number two with a thirty eh foot entry variance, subject to fire eh department's discussion and one-stop shop and paving up to the property owner's home.
Property owner's, property.
Property line, yes.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. All right, the next item is consideration of the final, eh, final plats and final replats. And then we have eh nine A and nine B. Can we have a motion to take them together? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion, second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item? Adjournment.
So one, one last eh, eh note before adjournment, eh, I'd like to introduce Luis Vasquez. He's sitting right back over there, he's our new planner one, I failed to introduce him at the last meeting. He eh comes with eh great credentials out of Tammy U, and he's now on board with us, so we have another planner on board.
Welcome.
So what you're seeing there is a good portion of the, of the main group. The planners are all sitting right down that side.
Very good.
And um, so Vanessa, I think you all are, are now seeing the, how it's set up, but Vanessa eh who is also our supervisor in the office, but she's also the eh, the, goes over eh zone changes. And she has her, raise your hand, our zone change planners. Okay, and then we have Rafa who handles our plats, annexations, and, and eh he has his planners, raise your hands. And our goal, our goal will be after eh possibly a year, I don't wanna put a certain time limit on it, but hopefully after a year, then they'll switch. And then we'll, they'll start, the zone cases will now be plats, and like, so we can get a good, a good eh cross-training, everything. And eh, we're talking about, you know, twenty-five years' experience in planning, twenty-two years' experience in planning. So I think we're, we're actually, we have a team coming together, we also have Alexis, who's our GIS mapping person that we have in, in our planning department. So it's, it's coming along.
Very good, very good.
So, thank you.
Mr. Nada, I know um, part of the ordinance is for this commission to do a few eh, I guess, hours or training on eh, I guess it's pandemic and conferences and stuff. So I know we have a Texas American Planning Association conference, and then I know there's a national one, and I know there's there's a law conference out of Austin also for planners. So I don't know if that's gonna come up anytime soon, or, but I know it's part of the ordinance I'll go at least to.
So if um, if you can at least get me to eh get to the end of the fiscal year so that I can add back some of the funding that was used for travel. And then we'll be, we'll be doing that, but we have, you might have gotten some mail, but eh we did register all of you with the American Planning Association. So I don't know if you're getting magazines or, or emails or something like that, but you all have been registered as members of the APA. So just so that you know that.
I haven't gotten anything.
I haven't gotten any.
I'll double check, I'll, I'll double check with Angie.
Before and then it stopped, yeah.
I'll double check with Angie and eh make sure that you all are doing that.
And I know at, at least two conferences what the ordinance calls for, for this commission.
Correct. We, I do know there's one that'll talk about legal cases, and I'll, I, we, Amanda, you, you told me about it, right? Somebody told me about it. Somebody told me about it, but that would be in South Padre Island, so that might be something to, to go to, to, and that covers legal cases that happen throughout the state, and that way you can get some cases. And eh, next week um, I will be out eh, I'll, I'll be headed to the national convention. Conference.
Okay. We're adjourned, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, staff.